So I think they're trying to expedite it as quickly as possible.
So what I'm hearing, and I just want to make sure, February 20th, February 21st, that will be the day that --
Committee.
Committee of '21, '22.
Twenty.
Twenty, whatever it is. They will make the, they will come up with a shortlist. And I'm hearing, I'm just going to throw it from three to five, minimum three, maximum five. I'm just throwing that out so we can start discussing that, because that was sort of an unknown. Then February 23rd is where the public forums are going to be. And in general, that's going to be a 45 minutes per candidate. And that's not set, I'm just putting the information out. There are five set questions that they can answer. And from there, and by the way, at that February 23rd, it's the college community, because a question came up, a good one, about, I don't know if that's one where trustees would or would not attend. But then on February 25th is where the order trustees would meet to interview personally those three to five finalists and make a selection, hopefully. That's what I'm hearing right now.
President Baxter, I worry that we're, are we going to have, if the public forum is on the 23rd, are we going to have all the comments in our possession by the 23rd? Is that going to allow for sufficient time?
That will be the plan. We will work.
The 23rd is the Thursday.
Thursday.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Is there a way that someone, that it could be a designated person that goes through this email that their comment is?
Can you elaborate on that?
Maybe you, since you're the non-voting number, with the public meetings, or someone can be ascribed in those meetings?
Oh, we have a process by which they will be able to put forth their evaluation, and they'll be picked up.
Okay. So by 21st we will have so everyone's comment?
We will work to make that happen.
Okay. So I'm in favor of that.
What do you mean, everybody's comment?
In the public forums.
Oh.
Evaluation from the participants.
I'm sorry, I'm redesigning this entire process now, from what it was supposed to have been done in November. And I want to be really clear about this. On the 21st, the committee is going to give us a number of names. And by the way, my understanding was, the recommendation was three to five, but they weren't, held them to that.
No. That's a suggestion.
That's exactly right. It could be more, anyway. So, clear on that? Three to five?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, it's on the proposed timeline that we have on the website, that was formulated previously. It says, essentially, three to five candidates.
So, they're going to give us candidates. And, but what they're going to do is just give us the names of those candidates, right? They're not going to be a lot of, I mean, and then the written information is readily available, because that was available to the search committee. So the question is, are we getting anything else from the committee other than the evaluations? Are we getting comments? Or is it just, these are your finalists?
You can get pretty much whatever you want, since I am the EEO chair, or EEO and EEO chair. I can have a conversation with you about how the discussions went.
Okay. I don't, let me think about that. But, so, but we're, there certainly isn't, at this time, contemplated that we get interviews with all the 22 members of the committee, and they're going to provide their input to us on these candidates. That was never contemplated, not, we're not going to.
No.
Okay. So, I mean, I think the cleanest thing is for us to get the recommendations and the paperwork. And then, we have public forums, which we can attend, my understanding is, we can attend, but we don't participate.
That would be correct.
Okay, good. And, and the reason for that is, we want to watch them in action, and see how they, how we think that they do. And then after that's over, we take a vacation for the 24th. And we come back on the 25th, and we discuss this and vote. Is that what we're talking about now?
Yeah. You would interview on the 25th? And if you're prepared to vote, you would vote on the 25th?
Where's Tom Clark going?
I know.
Okay. Okay. I think that's a clear process that I would go along with.
President Baxter.
Yes.
Just another quick question. Do we know how long the last search took? Was it two months? Was it longer?
It was longer than this.
Jackie, do you know?
Close to six months.
Close to six months.
This is a process we describe as brace yourself.
Right.
Okay, can we move on to the next item?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Is this all agreed upon?
Yeah, it's information.
But, everything we do, this is all we live with. So, I want my colleagues to just, again, I'm not thrilled I'm doing what I'm doing right now, doing this way, but it is what it is. But on February 21st, we have that, 23rd, we have that. The forum, then, to be very clear on the format of it all, it's going to be 45 minutes. We have that, everyone's comfortable with that. If you can, if you wish to attend, it is going to be a college-wide, so it will not be, the questions will be predetermined, established by the search committee. They'll come up with five questions.
No, 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 no. I don't think that, the search committee does not come up with the questions.
That is correct. I would think that.
Or this.
Why I'm bringing them up here in public, because those are exactly the questions I would have had, is to say, look, this is the recommendations. So that's why, and this will come and be a tripwire on us. So the five questions.
So might I recommend that Vice President Delgado work with Dr. Baxter and Trustee Kellogg to devise the five questions that will be utilized in the public forum?
Actually, I think, I mean, I think we did this in the past, and it's a good idea to involve the faculty somehow in the formation of these questions.
Well, if we add in Academic Senate President Karen Kane.
As a member of the committee.
And I would suggest that we.
I'm sorry. What about classified?
Yeah.
We need to have representation for the classified, not just.
You know, there's a, given the timeframe that we've now created tonight, which is very short, I think that if you, with too many people on the how we come up with the questions committee, it's going to be dysfunctional. And, because if, I also, I see Alejandro over there going, what about the students? Why can't the students do this as well? And I think if we have the faculty representative, if we have the ad hoc committee, and Vice President Delgado, those people can come up with the.
I'm sorry, but I have, I couldn't disagree more respectfully. I think the classified staff are a very important constituency of this district, and I don't think we should dismiss that. Not that that's what you're trying to do, trustee Otto, but they should have a seat at the table, at least drafting these questions.
They do have a seat at the table, they had to state that the seat at the table for the entire search process.
Yeah, so do the faculty, and so do.
Various people, in a proportion.
All of us, but I think, I think it's important to have them represented in having a say in the question.
Can I make a recommendation that the committee that puts together the questions would be the two, the faculty union representatives, and the classified senate rep, and the academic senate rep, and myself, and trustee Lamelli.
And classified union president.
Right, correct.
And the, and the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, didn't I, I mentioned that. All unions, all union presidents.
You said classified.
Oh, sorry. Well.
You said senate, classified senate president.
Them too.
And.
No, that would include you.
Rose, could you repeat that for just one?
Okay. It would be the president of the faculty union, the president of the classified union, the president of the part-time union. It would include the classified senate president, the faculty academic senate president, student trustee Lamelli, and myself.
But the, but not the members of the ad hoc committee?
If you so choose.
Can I just, I'll make a suggestion, and see where we want to go with this one. That's fine. There are five questions. One question historically is, why do you want to be superintendent-president, Long Beach City College? When you get, you've just named so many different constituency groups, that they're all going to want to ask a very specific question to their specific needs. So I'd only say that as that funnels through, if the final say would be the ad hoc committee, and we'll come up with five questions that we get from all of you, because my fear is, you're going to not have five. And if you do, they're going to be a paragraph long. So, again, the intent of the open forum is, it's just to let people see. Now, I've shared this conversation previously, but we're going to use an open forum here at LAC. It's another, because it'll be at one forum for each one at LAC. The question always comes up, what about PCC? So on, so forth. So I'm assuming only that we're going to have the forum at LAC. It'll be a 45 minute, and please, I'm just trying to get parameters here. At LAC, each person will have five questions presented. They will answer those in their timeline. But, I don't even know about option B, but this is why, I'll only tell you, certain colleges, this is why they have little mini greetings with each constituency group. Your administration, with your adjuncts, with your full-time, your classified, and your students. And they make a round robin, and they go and they speak to each one of those specific groups, so they can have their specific time. That is a whole other set of timelines, and meetings, and organizations that, that is something that happens, but we're, I just want to know that I have thought this thing through a couple of times, and I have observed these a couple of times. But it's just for this one, I would only say, long-winded, is that, so whatever questions come up, if they can run by the ad hoc committee, but we can finally look at them and just see what would be a good question to give to the five. And if my colleagues have suggestions as well, I'm happy to hear them, there's no Brown Act violation.
I think that's a good suggestion. The constituency groups can bring the questions, and you guys can decide on the five questions. I'm okay with that.
And the best news about that is that that committee of all those various constituency groups can start meeting tomorrow.
That's true.
To work on those questions, and can meet as many times as necessary.
And it's inclusive of everybody.
Okay.
Yes, we have plenty of time to make that happen. And so then, once we formulate those five questions, I will forward them to the ad hoc committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry. I'm.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree with the suggestion to have the constituent groups submit questions. And I think if we did an all-call, we probably would get the same question, you know, three or four times, in some varying degree of language, because people tend to ask the same thing of a prospective candidate. So having the ad hoc committee, which, you know, has the respect of being a separate committee for this purpose, choose the top five questions, will give them an opportunity to take the submissions, and make them applicable to everybody. I'm happy that the journalism students are here, because maybe the Viking could produce some survey to, what questions would you ask the superintendent-president? Hint, hint, you know, if you choose to do that. But one, one thing is.
Or multiple questions.
Correct. One, trustee Kellogg mentioned the round robin. I think that's a great idea. I've been a part of something like that. And if we were to do that, and I would leave it up to the ad hoc committee, I think a good opportune time would be on the 23rd. After the community forum, is to have the full-time faculty, part-time faculty, classified staff, the admin group, sit in a room where, you know, after each candidate presents, or after it's concluded, go in there for a meet and greet, shake hands. Because one of the things we talked about in hiring the new superintendent-president is the personality, and how personable that candidate is. And if there's a room set up somewhere, five rooms in the T building, where you can walk in, shake hands, meet, you get a lot of, you know, you just, the impression that you get, and the opportunity that you have to meet someone that way. I'm glad you brought that up. I think that would be great if we could make it happen. Even if we were to limit it to 30 minutes, you've got five candidates, you know, five candidates, five rooms, five groups, whoever can make it from your part-time and full-time and the admin, to sit there, because they're going to take the information back. And they'll take the impression back to the rest of them and say, you know, this candidate walked in and didn't shake hands, or didn't say anything, or kind of was like, oh, you know, too tired, the stamina wasn't there, how are they going to be able to lead our college? As opposed to, this person walked in and had all this energy, and I just think that's a good idea. I don't know if the ad hoc committee would consider doing that, but.
One thing.
Thank you.
What would they do, like, you have a weak handshake. How would they, I'm a little worried about that.
You know, I don't want to turn the weeds.
But then how do they communicate, how do they communicate their impressions?
They just go back to their bodies, and plus, we're going to get those surveys at the end of the open forum. We'll get that feedback that night. Rose said that they'll, but I don't, I don't think it's so much as that feedback we'll get from the open forum, as, remember, warm and fuzzy. Remember? That was a very important phrase that we used. I think giving, or having a reception even, after the forum. Having a reception where, after the forum, they all sit there, and they could mingle with whoever is there, will give us a good opportunity to interact with them, and to see what their personality is like. But that's up to the ad hoc committee, whatever you guys decide to do.
But one thing is, they will be taken around campus. So there would be a chance for people to.
We're talking.
Well, I, probably on Friday.
Tour. Put all that in, a campus tour.
So we're talking a tour?
Well, okay. Let me just tell you, that I'm, I am listening to the consultant that we are paying good money for, and, and she was against going, having different constituent groups. That doesn't mean, you know, we're paying her, she's not paying us. That doesn't mean we don't have to do, that we have to do something. But, I'm just telling you, she, she, I brought up this concept to her, and she was not in favor. But that doesn't mean we have, have to follow her advice. Just telling you. And the thing about, yeah, yeah, right, right, we don't have to follow. The thing about meeting with the different groups, to what end? Because who are they going to say, I didn't like Vivian's handshake, she didn't have a nice hand, or I didn't like her smile, or something like that? You know, I'm concerned about those kinds of things. And maybe I'm inadvertently, you know.
Well, you know, what I can say to that is that, hopefully, the board will be present at the forums, and you'll get a feel for it yourself.
Yeah.
Can I add to that? President Baxter, I agree with you, and yet, I can see trustee Malauulu's point. You know, it's not just, we don't want someone who's, they're intellectually on paper, and who's a good interviewer. We want to make sure the dynamic and the chemistry is also there, which is very important, the emotional intelligence. And perhaps that could be measured by us attending these forums, or through the interviews. But I, I think she's on to something, in that the interaction, there's, it's just so nuanced, not necessarily derail the process, but it would be noteworthy to observe. And I could, I could see that point of view. So, like you said, Rose, perhaps we could just attend and see the interaction, be fly on the wall, and observe non-participants, see if they interact with folks, and where they're at. Hopefully, they're not snooty.
If I may add, having sat through at least five public forums at different institutions that I've worked, you get a feel for the candidates at the forums. You know, if you wanted to see how they handle themselves on the fly, you could potentially allow a couple of questions that come out from the audience that aren't pre-scripted. That would be a way to do it. But it would be very difficult to try to hold forums, and then to hold meetings with the individual constituent groups. Because you wouldn't want all five candidates to be in the same room at the same time. Because we do have to protect their confidentiality. Even though they are here as a finalist, they may, or may not have, told folks back at their institution that they're a finalist. And I think we need to respect that from the candidates. And if you start, you know, we can contain kind of the forums somewhat, but when you start having more and more meetings, then word is going to get out relatively quickly. It's a very small community of 113 colleges in California.
Trustee Kellogg.
So, yeah, and I, I brought that up, because that was my process, as we were developing this, to make the conditions back to the full board, either option A, to have a lot, multiple meetings with each constituency group, or having an overarching forum with all the constituency groups. The challenge of that is not letting one group, the college, dominate that. And how you eliminate that is by having set questions, and that's what we will do. The other thing that, as we make the recommendations, because it is such a tight timeline, and the point to confidentiality, it's one of those very unusual situations. But these are not, I would recommend, that, and some people, I'd rather just be upfront right now, is not something that you, you put a camera on them. There's no reason for that. A lot of people say they like to have that, because then other people can watch it. I can tell you from past experiences, the only thing that comes out of that is where they were previously or currently at, it comes back to haunt that candidate, because they'll take the video, that's now YouTube. And so I would just suggest that it's a, it's a Long Beach process for the Long Beach City College community, and it's not one to be posted on YouTube, et cetera. Word gets out in many other ways. But I think this timeline, so, that's why I brought it up. That was the other option, if that's what you want to do. But I think we're clean here. And with the 21st, the 23rd, and the 25th, and at the 25th, we will see what we have and what we want to do, whether we feel very comfortable moving forward. I'm very optimistic on having 29 applicants. I'll be curious, like everybody else, see who they are, but also rely on the search committee of 20, 21, 22 members, to give us that shortlist of three, minimum of three, I think, five, per what we've talked about. If we feel, and we'll address it at that time, but I think that's what we have to do. And I'm not going to bring up my other items right now, because it may start, start another conversation on traditionally what you do in these searches, as far as background, and so on. Hopefully, the material will always be there with us, and we won't have to take a visit to their existing college to interview people there, which some people do. But right now, I'm comfortable with the 21st, the 23rd, and the 25th.
How about we hire a private investigator, trustee Kellogg? To go in there and look at their background.
To that point, is that, and we're.
I was kidding.
Funny, I know.
I was kidding, Jeff.
But to that point, there was a search that the finalist was sitting there, and at that finalist meeting, it had finally come up that, that all the information had come to that person. The one thing that just didn't seem to get to the governing board, is that person was fired from their previous job, and it didn't come forward. And the point was, why didn't we hire that investigator? Well, that's just Googling things, but.
Librarians found the information.
Yeah, so there's lots of ways, but I, again, to, to Superintendent President Gabel's point, it's a small community, and unless we're getting a high number of people from outside the state, and most people don't know everyone, but I, so I feel comfortable we've worked through it, if every one of you are comfortable with this. And again, the option, if we want to be there for the forum, I really like to have people that I can get feedback from, and we'll see how it goes. That's a long day, though, by the way. And again, to the point of, I don't think you can do both those type of processes. I just think there's too many moving parts, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't reach what you want it to be, and that is to help us get to a final decision. So I'm comfortable with, and thank you all for the process that we worked through, 21st, 23rd, and 25th. And we'll see what we get.
Do you want to say something else, trustee Zia?
No, I just am happy with these suggestions, and ready to move on to the next.
Okay, trustee Otto.
I have one more suggestion. I have one more suggestion, and that is, we don't videotape the forum.
What? I think you just said that.
Yeah.
Jeff just said that.
We've now agreed on that?
Yeah.
We don't have to.
Nobody disagreed.
Okay. Yeah. No, I, I think that.
Just working.
Jerome, you're off the hook.
I was going to say, I have complete confidence in Jerome, but it's because of my confidence that I'm worried, that he would get it dead on.
Can I just ask one point of clarification? I want to be clear. President Gabel mentioned that we could ask impromptu questions. And there wasn't really any decision around that. Is that a no? We're not doing that?
What I understand was, we're, ad hoc will finally come up with the five set questions to present to each one of the members.
Okay.
That's it. There will be no open, open questions.
Okay. One last point of clarification. Are we doing tours or not? Because I need to know.
Tours?
Tours, yes.
You'd have to do it the 24th.
The 23rd. The 23rd. We could do it after their forum presentation. We could take them on a tour, if that's the wish of the board.
You could take all of them on the same tour. You wouldn't have.
Yeah. And, you know, obviously, you know, we're doing it individually.
Well, I think that they deserve, especially if they don't live around here, they deserve to see the campus.
I think it's awkward to have all their candidates in, let's just not do the tour.
Yeah, I think we should only pick two of them to put them.
It would be individual tours.
Yeah, it, no, no, no. It is individual tours.
Individual.
Yeah.
How is that going to, I am assuming confidentiality, and this, I mean, we're, I remember when we went through our search at the Port of Long Beach, it was like, sequestering people, and no press around, so that, how is that, how are we going to manage that if we're going to give these folks a tour, and somebody's going to, you know, find out it's a public tour, you know? I'm just saying that, you know, perhaps we need to be a little bit more nondescript, and, and go the tour.
Okay. We don't have to do it. I just want to be clear. Okay.
I would also like to just have clarification, too. I just want to make sure, on February 21st, the, the selection committee will meet to come up with the shortlist.
Correct.
Which they will announce to us, or whomever.
Rose will contact us with the answer.
So that means that on the 21st, by 5:00 PM, those five people will know, or whatever, I just.
Sometime that evening.
They'll know that they're supposed to be here on the 23rd. Got it?
Correct.
So if they're out of state, they need to make arrangements. They have 30 hours to do that.
We will immediately contact them, given this timeline. As soon as we know who the finalists are, we will be on the phone to let them know.
Got it.
And they will already know that this is a possibility.
Right.
If they need to withdraw.
Okay. And then they have, so the 23rd will be public forums, and if we do something very casual afterward, I don't know how that's going to work. But on the 24th, there's kind of a, an open day. If they want to tour the campus, somebody will be available to host them.
We could make that available.
And they will do it at separate times, individually, not together. And the 24th is really the only day.
I'm sorry, I thought we're not doing tours.
They're not together.
I, I know. I thought we're not doing tours.
She's, she was, trustee Malauulu was asking if they requested it. So, I mean, that, that's.
As long as we disclose to them that, look, the confidential, confidentiality piece may be out the door, and you're going to be okay with it. Just saying, as far as the liabilities concerned.
Well, when they show up at the candidate forum, it's, it's public.
Yeah.
That's for certain. I thought maybe the concern was that candidates would see each other on campus or something. But they'd be here at different times, doing their, their tours, so, you know, while there is a remote possibility they could run into each other, probably highly unlikely. So if they do request a tour, I would think we would want to.
The 24th would be the day.
Provide for that.
Got it.
Yes. It would be a good day.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, everybody okay? All right, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Journalism students, you still have a half an hour. Consent agenda. Excuse me.[1771.22] Consent agenda, excuse me, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So I have a couple of items. I would like to pull a couple of items at a 5.8, one item at a 5.9, and one item at a 5.17.
Trustee Zia?
I wanted to move to approve the rest of the agenda, with the exception of those items.
Second.
Anybody else?
Jackie, Jackie's, that hold on.
Okay, but, Trustee Otto, you seconded that.
Yes, I do.
Okay.